Welcome to the Monday, January 20th, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. Would you please join me, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is Item B is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Order of the Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is Item C, the approval of the minutes of January 6, 2020. Minutes have been distributed.
We vote to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves, Commissioner Simmons, second to approve the minutes of January 6, 2020. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D is the building permits, uh, the building permit, or report has been distributed. Any additions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed on January 20th, 2020. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the Consent Agenda, Items A through H.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? As a point of order, uh, I would like, uh, Mr. Shockley to address Item H. Item H is a resolution directing assessments to be levied, uh, that again, uh, the key in that language is assessments to be levied. Mr. Shockley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so the motion, uh, directing, uh, resolution directing the assessments to be levied is the first step in the process for the assessment, uh, process. So, uh, you, as a commission, have to make a motion through a resolution with the total cost of what needs to be assessed to the Special Assessment Commission. Once it goes to the Special Assessment Commission, uh, there will be a public hearing. Uh, there will be an opportunity for people to object to any special assessments. Uh, there will also be notices placed in the newspaper. Uh, and if people are not happy with their assessment, uh, that is levied by the Special Assessment Commission, then it would come back to the City Commission for additional hearing regarding any type of appeal they may have. Uh, in addition to the statutorily required process, uh, the City Commission will recall, we had a series of public forums, uh, where we get received a tremendous amount of public input into the process. Uh, we have been wor- I've been working with staff, uh, to further develop that process. Uh, what I can say is that, uh, in the meetings before the Special Assessment Commission and the notice will be far and above what is, uh, the minimum requirements, uh, under the Century Code. Uh, we're including, it will be, including extensive reports and even, uh, footage, uh, video footage of the different improvement districts. Uh, so there'll be a lot of information at the Special Assessment Commission hearings. Uh, commissioners can attend those meetings. I would strongly suggest that you not actually participate in the hearing. Just, you can attend and listen. Uh, if you participate, you risk, uh, potentially not being able to participate in any hearings. But you can certainly sit and listen, uh, as any other member of the public during the Assessment Commission meeting. I can certainly answer any additional questions, but this is just the first step you, this is not levying particular assessments on any property. This is just telling the Special Assessment Commission to go ahead and start the process.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is Item Number One on the Regular Agenda. A 5:30 PM public hearing and a first reading on the Sand Hills Fourth Edition, a replat and rezoning. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioners, uh, before you tonight is, uh, proposed first reading of the zoning for Sand Hills Fourth Edition. Uh, this is accom- accompanying a plat, so I'm pulling up the plat. Um, this is continued development of the area within, uh, Meadowbrook Park, uh, near the Sand Hills Archers Park. And you'll notice, if you drive by there, there's some development that's happening in Sand Hills Third Edition. Um, this is a, kind of a compilation of a few properties that a different property owner than the developer of Sand Hills Third owns. Um, I'm gonna just pull up a quick map so you can see the existing parcels that we're looking at. Now, these are all zoned ag. Um, they have been cleared, so there is no concern of, uh, non-conformity. Uh, the only question that was, uh, brought up during the public hearing was there's a existing easement in place that they've since, uh, discovered through research of the title, uh, going through the property for the Sand Hills Water Association. We did have, uh, feedback on that at the public hearing. The zoning, however, is consistent with city ordinances and would follow the pattern of development that's occurring there. So, with, uh, regard to the comprehensive plan, the zoning fits, uh, just some details that need to be worked out on the plat prior to a final approval there. And, um, the applicant is available for questions. I don't think that they're ready to be before you with a plat right away on the upcoming meeting, um, but they may, and if so, uh, that would be considered at that time. So, with that, the public hearing is scheduled. I'm available for any questions. Planning and Zoning Commission did table this, uh, at their first iteration of it and wanted to get a little bit more information. They since have gotten a little bit more information. And, uh, our hopes from the city is that they continue to work with that neighborhood to make sure that they stress the easement issues, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Are there any questions?
Uh, just one, just to clarify, and maybe this will come out later, but in the staff report, it shows that the lot size is 75,600 feet, so I don't know if that's one lot or all of them, but then there's, it, the total area size is 3.12 acres. So, my math, of 43,560 square feet per acre, there's something not jiving here, so.
Yeah, well-
Hopefully we can narrow that down.
It's, thank you, Commissioner Olson. It's kind of a bit of a mess up there as far as the, uh, title work goes, so we're kinda getting to the bottom of that. We'll clean that up, um, before the final plat would be considered, before we go down here.
Commissioner Thorsted.
Uh, Tim, uh, several years ago, well, when this, uh, uh, development first began, uh, there was a lot of, uh, neighborhood, uh, discussion at those meetings regarding, you know, the long-term plans for the area, and I guess at, uh, maybe Commissioner Simmons can recall it. I think it was before this, this group of commissioners, we had voted on it. But at any rate, the neighborhood is supposed to be involved throughout the process as this develops moving forward. I guess my question is, is, uh, have we followed through with that to make sure that they're abreast of what's happening? And, you know, that there's, there's some scattered homes out there, not a lot of them, but there are some. And I just wanna make sure that we're just, you know, we talked a good story when we, we began. I just wanna make sure that's continuing, that there is discussion with them. They know what's going on and, and hopefully, uh, you know, they're not gonna be, you know, trapped in the middle of something they're maybe not aware of at some point.
Yeah, that's a good point, Commissioner Thorsted. Um, this one sorta hit us from a different angle. It's a different developer. Uh, the reason that it didn't raise to the level of concern maybe of a lot of the residents, there was a couple of residents at the public hearing for Planning Commission, was that there's no improvement district associated with it. If you look at the lots that they're proposing, they would access the existing Fourth Avenue. Um, we asked them to kinda stay away from everything else right now if they're not in a full-on area plan with the rest of the area. Um, one concern we have is with the whole area developing, we don't wanna do too much this here and that there. We wanna make sure it makes sense and a greater puzzle so that we can reduce special assessments by better design. Um, this one didn't affect a lot of things, so from engineering, public works, planning, we weren't all that concerned with that. And I think that, uh, was probably translated to the public hearing at Planning Commission that it wasn't a biggest, big as, uh, concern as if it were to have been the last round when there was a big development change and major improvements. Uh, but I think, um, I, I, I think an area, a neighborhood meeting prior to any major development is sort of where our head is going. We haven't had that yet 'cause we haven't had a push for it, but we could,
I, I just-
At your request, probably do a little bit more.
We wanted that to happen, is the neighborhood to be involved, know what's going on, so that all of a sudden, they just don't get, a whole bunch of development happen around them, they're trapped, and they, they can't do anything with their homes or, or whatever. So, I, I just wanna make sure that engagements are, I, I, I concur, this is kinda adjacent to the other one, but all of a sudden, they know, once this is done, then something else is gonna come up after that. And, uh, we just wanna make sure the people out there are, are involved in, in knowing what's going on, so it just doesn't get surround them.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I know that they were also concerned about their assessments, Commissioner Thorsted, and what they were gonna be assessed. So, I think we did make them a promise back then that we would keep them, so at least notify them, let them know the process, so they-
Okay.
They know. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Solberg? Okay, we're going to close the regular part of the agenda and move into the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? And the issue being, uh, the first reading of the Sand Hills Fourth Edition replat and rezoning. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue? Item Number One, first reading of the Sand Hills Fourth Edition. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on the item, uh, regular agenda, Item Number One. Commissioners, your thoughts, please?
I'll make a recommendation, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Tim, do you have-
I'm just here for questions.
Go ahead. Commissioner Simmons.
I guess I don't have any more questions, first we can ask that. If not, I'll make a motion to approve with the six recommendations from the planning zoning.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation with the contingencies as outlined, Items One through Six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Item Number Two. Again, we have a public hearing and second reading of the replacement of the official zoning map. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I wanna bring to light, I, I failed to have it in our packet. We did receive, um, two letters in support of the West Fargo Entertainment District. Uh, these came after our public, uh, after the first reading. Uh, I wanna bring those to your attention, one from West Fargo Events and one from West Fargo Public Schools. And then I did receive a letter prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing from a Mr. Robin Anderson. Um, we addressed those at the Planning Commission, and then also one today from a Mr. Paul Lear, who was present at the public hearing. Uh, primarily, the, uh, letters from the residents were related to the downtown mixed-use district and, uh, street design. Um, I think we addressed a lot of those, but I'll, I'll certainly wanna make sure that those are put into the record and that I'm available to answer any questions as it relates to how we dealt with that at Planning Commission, and I assume that they might also be here as well. So, uh, we had the first reading at the last meeting. Uh, since then, we did have a pu- finished our public hearing at Planning Commission. And, um, did have some updated recommendations from the Planning Commission. I highlighted those in your staff report. Uh, the first one I'll go over is just the four lots that were adjacent to properties along, um, Cheyenne Street to add those into the downtown mixed-use district. Um, try to zoom in as quick as I can. Prior to this, they would have been zoned light commercial. Uh, actually zoning to the downtown mixed-use district provides some benefit to those properties adjacent to that and also probably status quo if you were to looking, looking at redeveloping them, but it made sense to keep them in the downtown mixed-use district. These are these four that are just along this property that was adjacent to Cheyenne Street. We tried to limit the amount of impact we did when we did this rezoning, and those ones, uh, were not picked up. In addition, uh, we had a property owner come to us at, uh, Planning Commission and asked, request that we added in areas, um, north of the fire hall and south of the town hall bar, uh, to add those into the downtown mixed-use just district. I'm hi, I'm kinda hovering over them right here. Uh, those were previously zoned light commercial. The downtown mixed-use district, I think, is a net positive for both of those, are all those properties, all five of them. Um, we had just one more set of properties that was requested. Uh, they had an issue, um, with the way that they were previously zoned. These three properties here, adjacent to some vacant lots, asked to be changed to R1. They were previously R3. Um, I think it just goes to kinda protect the house that, the home, the homes that exist there. That are single-family homes. There's not a lot of reason that they're zoned R3. Uh, the gentleman that owns one of them came to the, uh, hearing and asked the Planning Commission to add that as a recommendation, so I'm forwarding that recommendation. With that, I don't have a whole lot to add other than what we went through on the last, uh, discussion. There was a lot of people that came to the public hearing at Planning Commission. Uh, we did notify, I think, 150 people, maybe more than that, those people that were affected within 150 feet of the zoning changes. And, uh, it was pretty positive, it was a good review. We talked a lot about what the downtown mixed-use district is and, and a lot of their concerns were covered. Um, I don't, however, would encourage you to take any public hearing tonight and take that into consideration in addition to our, uh, recommendation for approval. So, with that, public hearing is scheduled, and we are recommending, uh, second reading of the zoning map as provided to the planning, or the City Commission tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Questions for Mr. Solberg before?
Just one there.
Please, Commissioner Olson.
This, uh, rezoning includes the entertainment district too, right?
Yes, the entertainment mixed-use district is in this. And we've got no comments on that, other than the two that were in support that I provided tonight.
Additional questions for Mr. Solberg? All right. We'll close the regular agenda portion of Item Number Two, public hearing and second, and go to the second reading of the replacement of the official zoning map. We are now in the, in the, uh, public hearing. Is there anyone from the community and the audience that would like to speak to the Item Number Two regarding the replacement of the official zoning map? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Replacement of the official zoning map. Please step forward to the microphone. If you, if you'd please state your name.
When you said that was zoning of the entertainment district, which, the one in south?
Right, the one down south, yep.
We never received notification.
Okay, could you state your address, please?
115 32nd Avenue E.
Okay. Mr. Solberg, would you, can you help me with that?
So, um, this is the property down south here. They would not have received notification on a zoning change, uh, condition lease permit. They were notified of that within 350 feet. Within 150 feet of the zoning change, they were not notified.
How close, ma'am, where, how close do you live to?
Well, there might have been, it might have gotten potentially missed from the right-of-way or this parcel right here that's adjacent to theirs, um, and the river, so there's a little bit of distance. We do a buffer through GIS to determine what notification we provide, so I apologize for the ordinances that I'm-
Could you please, uh, with your icon, go to the lady's lot, so we're, we're, I'm absolutely 100% sure.
Right here, across from the river.
On the west side of the river?
Uh, east side.
East, gotta be on the east side, there's nothing on. So, you're on the other side of the river, then?
No.
Okay. So, you, you are... How far away, just, what would that be in distance? It has to be at least a block or so, doesn't it? That's... What are we looking at?
We, yeah, we run a, a quick buffer on the properties that apply, so it's based on feet from that. I, again, I apologize for the process we used to, to do that. Uh, Ms. Swinging was actually notified of the condition lease permit that's in consideration within this area, so.
Ma'am, would you like to, uh, address the commission, uh, anything else?
I really don't know anything about that zoning, really, to be honest, so I would need a briefing of what that's about. We walked in late, I apologize.
No problem. Glad you're here. So, could you make arrangements, uh, Mr. Solberg, to meet with this family?
I give a-
We're not voting on this, no.
We, we're going to vote on it this evening, and if you can bring us any additional information, but please give that family an update.
Yeah, if I, do you mind if I just give a quick-
That'd be great.
So, uh, the entertainment mixed-use district was based upon the planned unit development of this Cheyenne, but, uh, Eagle Run Plaza Sixth Edition that we've already approved. Um, our comprehensive plan didn't speak a great deal to a lot of the uses within there, but it spoke to the area as being a mixed-use center. So, we based, based our creation of the entertainment mixed-use district upon both the comprehensive plan's desire to have this operate as a mixed-use center, as well as the planned unit development which was approved. Um, so, the provisions of the entertainment mixed-use district to be, uh, increased, uh, traffic, increased, um, inter- um, excuse me, what I'm looking for, uh, activity center, uh, is consistent with, with that comp plan. So, what we did is wrote it into a, a code, wrote it into an ordinance, so that in the future, when people develop within there, they're allowed to develop within that framework rather than coming in for PUD amendments each time. Um, I think the provisions within there, you'd find, uh, increased building construction standards, um, increased site design standards. Uh, there's use of that district to be able to reference other laws that we reference when we talk about that zone, that district, such as, um, our off-premise sign, such as, um, our alcohol policy, for instance. If they wanna be able to have, uh, open container in the patio, those are things that you can discuss in the future that you're not discussing tonight. You're discussing the creation of the district for which you could then reference it in future, uh, changes to the ordinance, nuisance code, things like that. So, um, that's kinda the gist of it. The general framework of the entertainment mixed-use district is the Eagle Run Plaza Sixth Edition PUD, which has been approved.
Did that help?
I would be appalled.
Thank you, ma'am. And we have the lady's name and address? Yep, very good. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Again, this is Item Number Two, the second reading of the replacement of the official zoning map.
Just to make a clarification, we did create the district. We've already gone the second reading on that, so just for Ms. Swinging's, uh, benefit, we're looking at the zoning map which actually puts that into place here.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go back to the regular agenda. Commissioners? Any additional questions of Mr. Solberg?
If none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, the second reading of the replacement of the official zoning map. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Number Three is to review the off-premise sign within the E, uh, entertainment mixed-use district. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, Your Honor, again. Um, I'll pull up first a perspective view of this, and then I will also pull up a couple other, uh, details of this to kinda go over. I, I hope to hit everything that I can. If I miss something, I, please, um, catch me on that if you can. There is no public hearing scheduled for this at City Commission, our condition lease permit process as a public hearing at Planning Commission. I do, however, think that there's a number of people in the audience that would like to be heard, if you're willing to hear them. Uh, we received this application in order to consider direction of approximately 900 square foot off-premise sign within the, uh, prior to this, under consideration, entertainment mixed-use zoning district, uh, which, uh, had been approved at last meeting and just finally in the zoning district here today. Um, the entertainment mixed-use district has been fully adopted by the City Commission. Public hearing, um, was held at Planning Commission and again tonight at City Commission. In that district, um, direction for consideration of a sign like this is given with a statement that signage within the district should take into account the characteristics of its surrounding area and the intent and context of a vibrant entertainment environment. The commission should deliberate, deliberate such items as size, intensity of light or color, and motion to avoid nuisance factors to the public and neighboring uses. That's taken directly out of the ordinance that we passed. The proposed sign would be placed in a direction directly facing the intersection of 32nd Avenue and Cheyenne Street. It will wrap the corner of the property in a rounded design. With regard to the criteria we use for granting a condition lease permit, staff points out that compatibility in general with the district and the effect to the surrounding districts should be the main consideration. Notices were sent to property owners within 350 feet. Um, we did note some disappointment on not notification, not notifying people outside of 350 feet. Um, I think that's sort of been quelled on a couple of different calls that I took over the past few days. Um, you know, the, this often comes up, 350 feet seems a little short. On a large sign like this, I can see the impacts a little bit greater. Most of the time, 350 feet gets to those people that are impacted. I do think, however, that it tends to spread, news spreads with neighbors if it is a big concern. After, uh, the packet went out to the Planning Commission, we did get a proper, a property owner who commented and, and Ms. Swinging, who just you heard from, was the property owner. Um, she has nine windows, uh, actually 10, she stated at the public hearing, that face the sign. Um, what we're trying to educate ourselves on is the brightness factor of the lighting in the area. Um, what we determined through working with the applicant is that the proposed sign, when lit at 100%, is 30,780 lumens. With a proposal that at night, the maximum brightness would be 15%, which comes out to 4,617 lumens. Um, after looking at that, we looked at the existing lighting in the intersection, found that the lights, um, along Cheyenne and 32nd, the lanterns which face downward on the bottom of the new, uh, light fixtures are 7,500 lumens, and the teardrop lights that are on the top are 13,600 lumens. The LED traffic signal at the intersection range between 1,000 and 2,000 lumens. Um, I have been provided, and I did send this out to Ms. Swinging earlier as well, but I have been provided by the applicant on a, a light sensor that would help to keep this light, uh, to turn to that 15% at dark or dusk or whenever they set it. That was kinda the big concern from our Planning Commission. Um, they wanted to make sure that they know when dusk is. They wanted to try to tie it to like our city lights, so when our city lights on, turn on, that that brightness would turn down. I don't know how we can do that, but if we can, um, that would be great. I'll pass this out to you real quick. Um, so, um, Planning Commission held that public hearing, deliberated for quite a bit, and, um, they did end up, uh, accepting the recommendation of staff. At the time, our, our staff recommendations were two, is just that the sign is accessory to the surrounding buildings in their current scale of multiple stories and within the entertainment mixed-use district present at Eagle Run Plaza Sixth Edition. And should either the buildings or the zoning district change, then the sign would require review and potential removal. Second is our standard that a condition lease permit is, uh, received. They also added two more conditions, and those are in your staff report. Uh, the number three, status report be received within two months after construction of sign regarding the intensity of lighting and to discuss any potential nuisance factors associated with that. And then fourth, ensure sign operations are generally timed with street light timing to ensure the intensity of lighting is reduced during dark. So, um, if we determine that those would be acceptable by the City Commission tonight, what staff would do is write those three conditions into a condition lease permit that we would, uh, record against the property. And if there's any nuisance issues, um, if they aren't, uh, abiding by the rules that you provide tonight, that, that would be a violation of city ordinances, and, and, and we would notify them that violation and run it to our prosecuting attorney for, for dealing with. So, um, this is kinda common with, um, EMC message centers, that we do this in residential areas. This one has a great enough impact- This one has a great enough impact that we felt it was important to do that regardless. So... I think I've covered most of everything. I think the most important thing to look at here is scale of the sign. It is a large sign, larger than what we would ever allow. However, when scaled against the building, it provides a little bit different perspective of how to look at it. I am probably not as educated as you, Mr. President, on brightness of signs, so anything you could weigh in on that, or any expert opinion would probably be helpful on this deliberation. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Solberg, first of all, Commissioner Thorstedt and myself will both be recusing ourselves because of interests pertaining to the sign industry. With regard to the LED brightness, Mr. Solberg is absolutely correct. Every LED streetlight, every LED control light, traffic control light, is brighter than the LED emitting lumens of a message center. That is correct, and I've been through numerous demonstrations showing that to the city of Fargo, and actually had their engineers run the light meters, and they were all surprised. But, so, in my opinion, the LED and the lumens brightness will not be an issue here. If anything will be an issue, it will be the size of the display. It's got a lot of LEDs in a very confined space, so.
I apologize, Mr. President. I did tell the Ms. Swingin that I would provide this picture, which is taken out, I believe, her bedroom window for your review. And we did include that information in the packet as well.
Mr. Shockley, I'm going to call on you. You've got something to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. In addition to enforcement action with the municipal prosecution with a conditional use permit, we require holders of conditional use permits to enter into an agreement. If there is a violation of the terms of the conditional use permit, this board can pull that conditional use permit, and then would have to remove the sign. And we put that into the conditional use permit. It's an effective tool. It's recorded against the property, so.
Violation of a conditional use permit is removal?
That could be one of the options by the commission. It's up to the commission how egregious you feel the- I mean if-
For what the developer's going to be paying for this display, I would heed that warning very readily. Commissioner Olson?
Just curious, in relation to the size, how does it compare to electronic billboards we see along Thirteenth Avenue at Forty-second Street in Fargo? This can be bigger than that?
Yes, a lot bigger.
A lot bigger.
I- the most recent one that we approved was on Forty-fifth and Main in front of what was Nessato and now is J.K. Marine. That is under 400 square feet.
Commissioner Simmons?
The one thing I would comment on though is also the placement of that sign, Commissioner Olson. You know, where on Main Avenue, it's up there in the wide open, or Thirteenth Avenue. Comparable to this facility, it's going to still probably look small compared to the building. So, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a distraction. Like, I'll be honest with you, some of those down Thirteenth Avenue, I'm watching them, cars are honking, because they just, you gotta look.
Right.
This is a little bit different. It's in the corner. It's not, you know, I mean, it's going to be comparable to that facility, I think. I think it's going to be a great addition, so.
So, question for you, Mr. Solberg. Standard, this is a five-story building, right?
There's a six-story on the south side and five-story on the east side.
Yeah, I'm looking at the five-story building, okay. So, this display, as in the reference drawing, is going to take it to about the third floor, is that right? In the overall height? Just about?
To third or fourth, I could scale this.
It's 40 feet, but... So, it's got to be between the third and fourth.
Third, yeah.
Gives you a perspective of size. Additional questions for Mr. Solberg? And again, Mr. Thorstedt and myself will be recusing ourselves on this item.
No questions. Do you want a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Simmons moves. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the review of the off-premise sign with the Entertainment Mixed Use District. Is there any further discussion? This is not a public hearing. Address your question, if you would, to Mr. Solberg. I'll allow it, Ms. Swingin. This is not a public hearing, ma'am. But if you have a question, I would certainly allow you to ask the question of us. I'm breaking protocol a little bit, but you've taken the time to join us, and we want you to have, as you say.
So, the first reading was at the last commission meeting. Tonight, the second reading formalizes that. Thank you, Your Honor. We oftentimes will get applications that accompany text amendments to the ordinance. The procedure for approving it after you approve second reading is what, in our mind, validates that, so.
Often, an application will drive a discussion within the city, both from us reaching out to our legal department, staff, department heads, getting together and visiting about it, and then, of course, then it comes to the commission. Mr. Solberg?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Fisk, our city administrator.
Yes, the agreements that are being referenced are agreements that will come before the commission. We were waiting for this to be approved or not approved, but the agreements will actually define what can and cannot be advertised on those boards per the city commission's wishes when we have our discussions. So, what it does is takes this off-premise sign and narrows down its use, even though most off-premise signs don't have that ability to be narrowed down. So, therefore, the protection of the community and the city and everyone involved, and all participants in this are very willing to agree to those terms, so.
Additional comments from the commission? It's your pleasure.
We already-
Yeah, we have a motion on it.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion, a second motion by Commissioner Simmons, second by Commissioner Olson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is item number four. Is the review of the planned unit development amendment, the PUD, at 1360 Prairie Parkway. Malachi Peterson?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant plans to construct a two-story, 15,000-square-foot office building on a vacant property that will be identical to the office building that was built in Phase One, which you can see on this map here. This is the Phase One building. The proposed PUD amendment is consistent with the city's land use plan, which depicts the area as developing as an office park, and it is also consistent with all other city plans and ordinances. Last week, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the approval of this PUD amendment, and tonight, I'm asking you to approve it with the conditions of approval as noted in my staff report. I also believe the applicant is also present tonight, in case you have any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Commissioners, do you have questions for him?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurnick second. It's been moved and seconded to approve item number five, the planned unit development amendment at 1360 Prairie Parkway. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item number five is the second reading for ordinance number 1146, the bench sign franchise. Mr. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Before you is the second reading of an ordinance repealing the sign, repealing the bench sign ordinance in its entirety. There's been no changes between first and second reading. Can certainly answer any questions the commission may have.
Questions of Mr. Shockley? Your pleasure, please.
I'll move to approve, second reading.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1146, bench sign franchise. Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Thorstedt?
I'll recuse myself from this one as well.
Excuse me, Commissioner Thorstedt. I knew that. I apologize to you. Commissioner Thorstedt and myself will both be recusing ourselves of this vote also.
I would just ask the question of what are we replacing these benches with?
We don't have a bench picked out. The whole purpose of this was that we were talking about redoing our streetscape and our downtown and our Thirteenth Avenue, our main corridor looks. And so, the thought was if the commission wanted to repeal the ordinance, we would start looking for benches that would replace those that would be more appealing and go with the aesthetic look of the city. The actual agreement does not end until June.
So, are you going to have advertising on the new benches?
No.
Do we have any idea of what the cost is going to be, though? I mean, right now, we make a small amount of money, but we don't pay for the benches. When they go away in June, we're going to add a bunch of benches. Do we understand the expense side of that, I guess would be my question?
Honestly, we have not investigated that. This was brought before the commission for your consideration. Do you want to repeal this ordinance? And then we will go forward and do the streetscaping and look for those types of things, or do you not? And then we go from there.
I don't have a problem with repealing the ordinance. I'm just curious to know.
Any additional questions? I have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, presentation of the 2018 audit report, Mr. Jim Larson, City Finance Director.
Thank you, President and Commissioners. I'll make a brief report on the 2018 audit. This was delayed due to several factors. One, the start of a new finance director. And then, secondly, the schedule of the auditors delayed it. So, we would like to have this to you actually six months ago, and our goal is to have the 2019 in that timeframe. So, again, just to let you know why it's so late in it. So, I'll, if you'd like, you can go to page 107 in your packet, and that's where I'll start. The first component is the opinion. What we strive for here is to have a clean opinion for the audit report that states that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund for the city of West Fargo. And that was the opinion that was issued by the state auditor. So, that's good. That's what we want for our city, and we want to continue with that. And that means that the financial statements that are presented will be used for others like Moody's and other ratings and other financial institutions in evaluating like bond rating and other things of the city of West Fargo. Just, I just want to just hit a few points that are positive here. Our cash increased by about 43 million. The primary increase was due to some bonds that were sold to reimbursees for expenses we had for mostly capital projects. So, that's why we went, why we've increased that amount of cash. The other part is that, overall, the city increased net assets by about 24 million. Again, that's a very positive when you're dealing with an increase in a city of this size and the growth. Kind of the primary causation for that was that we did receive grant funds from the state of North Dakota for capital projects, street projects, and things of that nature. And as those come in as grants or donations, it allows us to gain in our net worth. The other part is enterprise, or business-type activities. We had a gain of 6.7 million there, which is positive, and I know that's something that several commissioners keep their eye on, is make sure that we're moving, that we're staying in a positive activity in those funds. And in the year 2018, they did report positive. We've not completed the preliminary review for all the year-ending of 2019, but at this point, we look to remain positive in that area also for 2019. Overall, we look positive for the city of financials for 2019, but again, we've not completed the year-end work, and we've got some other entries to come through with that. So, as I said, I would keep my presentation brief, and I'd be glad to entertain any questions.
In the bills for this month, there's a line item with the state tax, state auditor, 23,000 and change. Jim, would you explain that one?
Yes, that is the fee. That is actually part of the fee that they charge. Actually, the total cost was about 28,500 for the 2018 audit. And that is consistent with prior year's audit fees.
So, the city of West Fargo is required to have a audit, performance audit, by the state auditor, but we have to pay for it?
Yes. One correction, we're required to have a performance or a financial audit by an auditor. So, it does not, it is not required to be the state auditor. And that is one of the things that I'd like to, we are going to take a look at what the cost would be going forward.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thorstedt?
Jim, they had a couple of things we need to work on. One was financial statement preparation or internal control system related to that, and then also fraud risk assessment. And city has concurred on both of them. That is something we believe we have to do. Is that something we're moving forward with and getting done?
Yes. First one I'll address is the financial statement prep. There are a few items that we don't record in our current financial system, and I've actually discussed that with our city administrator, Mrs. Fisk, and we will be making those changes. And I support the findings they have in that area, because right now, our financial reports are not showing the full financial picture. We have to bring other information in, and we want to bring that forward and have that there as a consistent part of our financial records. The other part is a fraud risk assessment. And again, that's something else that I would concur with, that we need to take a look at internal controls. What kind of, what exposures do we have for fraud and associated costs of protecting those assets? So, we concur, they did not happen in 2019 because we were not made aware of it until then, but we will, we are adjusting the financials at the end of 2018 and bringing it through all of 2019. And then, we will start planning for the fraud risk assessment here in 2020.
This is a question I've meant to ask you for several months, Jim. With regard to the employee's retirement, do we carry any type of liability on our financial statement like we do their vacation?
We do show it, that there is a, there is liability. That's what's called the OPEB or the pension net liability. But that liability actually sits with the state on North Dakota PERS. But they do, they do make us report it, that they want, so that the reader can understand that what is the condition or the status of the PERS or the defined benefit- or the defined benefit, uh, plan that our employees are in, but the, the, uh, the liability actually sits with the state, I believe, not with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, Jim, uh, on Commissioner Thorsted's first item in reference to the notch we got or whatever from the state, that's also part of our software program, is it not, that we have to update that, and?
We do need to keep our software updated, uh, in current, yes.
So I'm assuming we'll be looking at new software in the very near future as well, or parts of thereof?
Yes, I would, uh, I'd like to recommend that we do make that look, and, uh, I think there's some features that we could have that would enhance the userability of our software and our financial system, at this time, the software we have, I'm not gonna say it's poor, but it's also written for much smaller entities than the city of West Fargo, we are the largest client on it, and we are finding that it just does, is not robust enough to handle the needs of a city of the size of West Fargo.
I knew that, I just wanted to throw it out there, so the commissioners are prepared when it comes forward, thank you very much, 'cause I, I think you're right, it's important that we upgrade, that we have the technology that we need.
I would agree.
Additional questions for Mr. Larson? Thank you, congratulations on a good report. Item number seven is the review of the engineer's report for sewer water storm and street improvement, district number thirteen twenty-nine, Mr. Scott. City Engineer.
Thank you, Commission President Dardis, and members of the commission. If you recall, the, uh, second meeting we had in December, we, uh, created an improvement district for this development, located, um, on the corner of Ninth Street West and Thirty-second Avenue, the preliminary plat has it titled, uh, Eagle Run Plaza Ninth Edition, and today I'm here to present the engineer's report, which will identify the planned improvements for this development, as well as identify the anticipated cost associated with those improvements. Bear with me here as I, so this first exhibit here, just wanted to reiterate, uh, re, remind the commission that the assessment district boundary is defined completely by the, uh, proposed plat area, so there are no outside parties of this plat that will be assessed for these improvements, and again, that district boundary was created back in December. And then I'm gonna zoom right to the proposed improvements at this point, as more engineering has laid out, uh, what you see here is an east-west roadway through the development, this road will be a private road, it will be within a, a public access easement, underneath will be city utilities, the utilities will be, uh, owned and op, or owned and maintained by the city, however, uh, being that the, the roadway is private, we will have a requirement within the developer's agreement that they, uh, maintain any surface appurtenances of these utilities, so things like manholes, um, if the casting gets kind of dislodged within the pavement, it'll be the private entity's responsibility to maintain that, if they don't have the means or methods to get out there and do it, we of course certainly will, um, and that cost would be, uh, at their expense. So along with this east-west, uh, roadway with their utilities, there's also a north-south, uh, planned, kind of, again, it's a private drive, but it will be within a public access easement, um, and underneath that particular roadway is a storm sewer line and water main that connects down to Thirty-third Avenue, so really, you know, pretty localized improvements, and all the assessments would be incurred by the development, at this point, the, uh, engineer's estimate for the total project is one million, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and as you'll find in the, the report, the average assessment for each lot would be about a hundred and fifty-one thousand, at this point, just, eh, eh, as we all know, the assessment commission reviews the, the benefit and decides how to allocate the assessments, but for the purpose of, of this engineer's report, we assume that each lot would just get an equal share, just to make the math simple, so, uh, just for demonstration purposes, uh, each lot would receive a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar assessment for these improvements, the developer was made aware of this engineer's report, they were made aware of the total estimated cost, as well as what the average assessment would be per lot, and, and they, uh, had no comment, if you will, they were, they were fine with it, asked us to proceed, so, tonight, I will ask that you approve the engineer's report, and direct the engineer to prepare plans and specifications. At that, I will answer any questions.
Did I see your slide again, that shows the respective of the streets, uh, the lots and the streets around it?
This particular slide. One thing I did not mention, uh, you'll see on Ninth Street, on the left side of the page here, the developer has requested a full access, today there is a median that is running, uh, in the roadway there, so they're proposing a full access, which means we would have to open up the median, they are also proposing that we modify the median on Thirty-second Avenue on the north side, and convert that into a three-quarter access, so basically allow for left turns into the development, but not a left turn out of the development, we do have a traffic study currently underway that will help answer that particular question on whether or not we would allow this, I anticipate that we will, the cost for modifying those medians will be a hundred percent, uh, borne by the developer.
And an additional special assessment to them, because, you know, you're talking about a, uh, a traffic study, it hasn't determined that yet, but yet, they're requesting a full access and a three-quarter access, do these numbers include that, uh, as depicted here?
Yes, they do, a, and although it's premature, to be conservative with the cost, we felt comfortable moving forward, eh, there, there's mention of it that, um, you know, again, if anything, it will reduce the cost if we don't include them, the developer is aware that there isn't a final decision made on these two access points until that study is done, I don't anticipate the study will be done until sometime in February, um, so, once we do have a conclusion there, we can move forward with implementing those into the final plans and specifications, and again, to be conservative, I included them with this report versus not including them, and then having to modify the report at a later time, or add those in, and have that be more of a, um, a surprise factor, if you will.
Mayor, please, Commissioner Simmons.
Dustin, does the state play any role in this?
The, the state, no, uh, Thirty-second Avenue and Ninth Street are, are a hundred percent city-owned, maintained roadways, uh, the one issue with Thirty-second Avenue would be, uh, the potential of federal funding in the future, so if we were to, you know, there's a-
Not allied by them, is where I'm going with this, and, and, yeah, that could affect our funding.
Their, their, uh, their concern wouldn't necessarily be with the access here, um, if anything, there is a discussion, and we're studying it with-
Traffic lights?
The traffic lights at the corner, or at this intersection here at Ninth and Thirty-second, if they are unwarranted by federal standards, and we go ahead and install those signals, that would jeopardize the potential to get federal funding in the future, now, we've expanded and urbanized this corridor already, um, it could be years out before we need to do anything, but that would still be the risk we would take, again, I don't see that this particular access or modif, modifying, modifying the median to allow for a three-quarter access, that wouldn't put us in any kind of jeopardy.
I'm sure John would say it also would affect our insurance, in reference, I know in the past, John, we've installed, we're Thirty-second and Forty-fifth, we actually put both of those in, I think, ahead of time?
Sure.
But we did it because of life and, quite honestly, life and death, we put them in, we felt it, but I remember the state didn't think the same way we did, so, we just have to be cognizant of that, is all I'm saying, and you know that, you've been here long enough to know, the other commissioners, I'm kind, kind of, and them know that.
With regard to Commissioner Simmons's point about, as part of your traffic study, uh, streetlights at night, um, that traffic study has not been completed yet, and if that comes in at a later date, that traffic study, that it warrants, uh, traffic control lights at the Ninth Street, and because we're setting up a special assessment district for this district now, will they still have, are, do we still have the option to assess them, uh, as part of that street lighting?
So if, if the study recommends a traffic signal system at this intersection, we will move forward as, uh, that being an independent project, we will go through, um, an entirely new process to create a, a new district, as the benefiting area would be much larger than just this development, and go through a resolution of necessity to create that district and move forward, um, as a standalone project, which means that traffic signal project would likely not occur this year unless we get the results back soon enough, um, but as we've learned through the last five years of doing construction projects, traffic signal systems take about six months or even longer to even get the, the products made and, and delivered here, so, I would anticipate that if it is warranted, it would be a, a future project, either next year or the following, but we, to answer your question, yes, we would, uh, have a separate improvement district and go through a traditional process for that.
But to be clear for the public, one hundred percent of these improvements are being assessed to the developer's lots, and he is paying those special assessments.
One hundred percent correct.
Thank you, sir. Additional comments, questions? Just, Mr. Jurneveg.
Just one question would be, eh, eh, more for my information, what percentage or how many miles, whatever way you can quantify it, of roads in West Fargo are private roads, where we're not doing the, you don't own the asphalt, so to speak?
Great question, um, eh, eh, I, I won't even venture a guess, if I, I mean, if I did, I'd say it's-
I know it's an answer question, 'cause I have no idea how you'd know.
I would probably say about, eh, ballpark about ten percent, you know, less than ten percent.
Less than ten.
Less than ten percent, um, but, the, the case in point, a lot of our commercial areas, you know, the, um, Benards and Cashwise, and, um, we have a lot of other areas where we have these private drives, the one thing that gets little complicated are, we have multifamily residential areas too, that have little private drives, the difference being, some of those are in public access easements, like this, and some of them aren't, and so my first response to your question would be to ask another question, are you referring to, how many of these do we have in a public access easement, so on and so forth, but, um, we have gotten more sophisticated in our requirements and working out, uh, certain details with developers that are gonna have these private drives within a public access easement, and how, uh, we address items like, eh, again, we have a, a water gate valve that gets dislodged, um, and it's their roadway, we now have built into our developer's agreements that, uh, that, the, the, at least the financial, um, ownership of that development.
Oh, so we're fairly standardized in how we as a city manage those?
Yes, eh, we, in the last five years, again, have, eh, we, we started getting more sophisticated, eh, for me, it was when Cashwise came in in two thousand and thirteen, eh, we started kind of revamping, not, not that there wasn't language before, but we worked with Shockley and, and, and Nance, eh, and got a little more detailed, and, um, progressively made more steps as, you know, the Hornbacher's come in, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, additional questions?
Uh, oh, just a comment, uh, noticed this during the reconstruction of Thirty-second Avenue, is when there, people were coming off of Thirty-second by the Dollar General, there's no signage there on that private road, and there were, people don't remember who has the right of way, in whichever direction they're coming from, I don't know if that's any kind of stipulation here, I'm just looking at that intersection there in the center of the development, if there's any, we put a requirement, any kind of signage for a yield one way or the other, or, or not, since it's a private road?
Absolutely, it's a good, it's a good, um, item to point out, uh, eh, we certainly can, now's the time, we, um, we haven't executed a developer's agreement or finalized any plots, and again, this is in its infancy, what gets tricky is whether or not the city will do it within the improvement project that we are assessing, uh, or if we will have that as a requirement as those adjacent lots develop, and I would lean towards, it would probably be that scenario of, um, when those lots develop, because depending on where their parking lots tie in, and it could change the, the ideal placement of those signs, but it's certainly a great thing to point out, and we will certainly take note of that.
Safety concerns, and then also like on where Cashwise is, that's a very narrow road, get down to Cashwise off of Thirty-second, and, eh, just for, you know, turning and things like that.
I know these areas get a little difficult too, for law enforcement, for example, so if we do post a, say a stop sign or a yield sign there, those things get difficult for law enforcement to go in and, and, I guess, regulate on private access, uh, drives, although, again, they're in a public access easement, so it, um, but we'll certainly take note of that, and-
Anything additional, commissioners? Again, we're on item number seven, engineer's report, uh, for sewer water storm and street improvement for the district thirteen twenty-nine, it is an actionable item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurneveg seconds, been moved and seconded to approve the engineer's report for sewer water storm and street improvement for district thirteen twenty-nine, as presented by Mr. Scott, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number eight is to review the North Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Service Agreement, Mr. Scott.
Thank you again, Commission President Dardis, and members of the commission, uh, so thi, this is, um, I'll, I'll try to be brief and let the questions come, but for the most part, what, what's going on here is that the DOT has historically always, um, always internally inspected bridges throughout the state, local communities pay to share, uh, to have their bridges inspected, the DOT has decided to outsource this activity, and in doing so, uh, if communities want them to still administrate this, we would have to enter into this particular agreement that I'm asking for you to approve tonight, um, the benefit is that, A, administratively, we don't have to put forth the time and effort and/or hire the expertise, uh, and B, there's still federal funding that the DOT gets, um, the change really gets to be the overall cost, so, as they go through a process of acquiring an outside consultant to go through and evaluate bridges, the cost may be higher than what the DOT did it internally, uh, so, uh, they, and they have also allowed local jurisdictions to decide whether or not to join, or stay with the DOT administration, or to independently, um, inspect bridges, which, for us, we would have to hire our own outside consultant, so at this point, I'm just asking for approval of, of the agreement for bridge inspections with the North Dakota Department of Transportation.
Did I see the, is there any additional, uh, language below, Dustin?
Uh, the additional information that I, eh, wrote with the agenda is, is shown-
Okay.
-up on the screen here, uh, there is the, attached, uh, to this is the actual agreement itself.
Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, Dustin, has it, has it always been an eighty-twenty split?
Um, my understanding is that the, eh, yes.
Okay.
But, I, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't know the history well enough, and the, the financial, financials well enough to, to say, were there, were there years where they were short, you know, a certain bucket was short, and they had to modify, the policy is eighty-twenty, so just like Cheyenne Street, we applied for a program that's an eighty-twenty fun, funding mechanism, all the coffers were capped, you know, they're short, if you will, or limited, and so we actually ended up getting about thirty percent of our project funded, eh, as an example, so, the policy is an eighty-twenty split.
Okay. Nine bridges, less than a hundred dollars a bridge?
Historically, that's what it's been, it's actually, um, our transportation engineer looked into it, and he thinks it was less than fifty dollars, I didn't wanna overly commit, but i, it's been relatively cheap, yes, and if anything, again, that number will go up through the need to outsource it, but even if it doubles, triples, quadruples, we're still talking a relatively, uh, small dollar amount, um, even if it got up to a thousand dollars a bridge, we're still talking less than ten thousand dollars a year.
I just can't imagine what a consulting engineer's gonna charge to call to inspect a bridge versus the North Dakota DOT, I, I hope you're right, I hope it's triple of what it was, but, um, this is an actionable item, also, do, is there any other additional questions for Mr. Scott, with regard to his request?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurneveg, is there a second, please? Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the North Dakota DOT Bridge Inspection Service Agreement as outlined by Mr. Scott. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
You.
Construction updates. Got anything for us?
Well, one thing I would highlight, as you all saw before we convene our meeting tonight, we had a second public input meeting for the Ninth Street corridor study. Went well, attendance was great. Would like to remind everyone that there are social media outlets out there to get engaged. So the project is moving well, and I think we got some good feedback tonight. And other than that, nothing, nothing really formally to report on in terms of construction.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Scott regarding construction updates? Very good. City administrators' report. Mrs. Fisk.
Mr. Shockley has one item that he would like to address with you guys before we get, before I go through mine.
Thank you, members of the commission. I just wanted to give you a quick update that if there's any upcoming projects for the city, that larger transportation projects. TFIYA just came out with its rural development initiative, and surprisingly enough, the city of West Fargo would qualify. You can get a loan for about 1% interest, 1.7% interest, for projects between $10 million and $75 million. Covers everything from roads, transit systems, pedestrian pathways. In some circumstances, you can use it for an airport also. So just wanted to let you know there are some options out there for some really low-cost money right now. I don't know how long the program will be out there, but I just wanted to flag it up as a potential source of funding. Unfortunately, we, we can't use it for the Cheyenne project because that was undertaken before they announced the program.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Mrs. Fisk, would you designate somebody from your staff to please review that and see if there's opportunity for the city of West Fargo?
Yep, our wheels are already turning. I've been looking at Dustin and Jim and Matt and Tim. So yes, we will, we will look into that. I don't have a lot for you today. I just wanted to let you know that staff has been meeting and coming up with an outline for our special assessment and city commission specials, our special assessment guideline, I should say. I'm going to make it too confusing. Anyway, it'll explain the process of how we plan on handling the public-facing part of all of the different meetings and how we plan to notify the public and how we plan to keep the special assessment committee abreast of everything that's going on. It's going to be a little different. I don't have it finalized, so that's why I'm not handing anything out. We're still trying to put the finishing touches on it. But to start with, all of our special assessment committee meetings will be, will be videotaped so that they can be played to the public, and they'll be posted on our website all minutes, all information will go out there. There will be, there will be a letter at one point that will go out to everybody that could be affected, guiding them to different places where they can look and find out information and how to keep track of that information. Extensive media and other social media sites that will notify them of what's going on. There's a lot of information here that we're going to give out. One thing, the letter, the letter will go out, but it will also let them know where they need to go to stay informed. And so with that in mind, we're going to try and give them dates and times, but let them know to keep informed by watching our website and other places to make sure no times or dates have changed, because we can't be sure that there won't be a change. When we get this completed, which should be in the next few weeks, we will bring it forward to commission for approval as a process and get your input. We'll send it out first so that you have a chance to look it over and give feedback. And then we will approve it and use that as, as our main outline until we have adjustments. Dustin Scott also had created quite some time back, a developer requested improvements. This was also another thing that resulted from our special assessment committee meetings. And it was a listing of what can be allowed in a special assessment district so that we know what can't, and if they want to go over and above that, it takes commission approval. And so, and as you've seen in the past, Dustin's brought it forward, and as you'll see in the future, anytime they're going over and above these items, he will let you know that that is over and above what we have as our listing, and then you have to make the decision if you want to cover it or you want the developer to cover it. So we're going to fine-tune this a little bit more, and then that will also be part of that policy that we'll bring forward to you within probably the next month. So I just wanted you to know that the outcomes of the special assessment committee haven't been forgotten, and with the upcoming special assessments, we plan on fine-tuning our process for that. So we'll keep you posted. With that, I asked Matt if he would like to give you an update on where he's putting all this snow.
Good evening, May. Mr. Randbick, welcome.
Yeah, well, with this weekend, with this last snow, it was quite the mess. Luckily, the staff had in place before I after, the, well, started the first day I got here, they hired some contractors to come in and help us out, kind of widen the streets back. So for the eight and a half days that we widened the street back, starting on January 6th, ending last Thursday, they were hauling about 700 loads, truckloads per day to four different sites around town. And the total cost for, for the contractors today is about $155,000. We have two more days today and tomorrow that we will actually have the entire town hauled out once. So that total cost is going to be somewhere around $190,000. We'll sit down with the rest of the staff tomorrow and see how we're going to go about going down in the different areas on the southern part of town that get hardest hit this weekend, try and go back and get those streets back again to give us space, you know, before the next snow hits. Had we not gone, got out and widened those street back, the street back, what we did, we would have lost a lot of streets down south, there was just no storage down there. So we'll have to decide whether we're going to see if we can just work it out with our trucks and our blowers, or if we're going to have half the contractors come back or what we can do. Still in the process of, you know, figuring out what's going to be the best fit for doing that. So, but it's done, I mean, the guys have been working 10-hour days or more, and they really did a really ju, good job this weekend coming in. I guess, one of the guys kind of pointed out, if you're coming in on Seventeenth Avenue and coming from Fargo into West Fargo, you can definitely tell where that line is between the two cities, because when you're driving, it's fairly narrow, and as soon as you can see where they widened it out, the street widens out by about 10 feet, and you can definitely tell that. So they've done quite the job. We are, we have, we're running four dump sites right now with the snow. One main one being Thirteenth Avenue just south of the fairgrounds, another one Thirty-second Avenue over by the diversion. We have a smaller site on Forty-eighth Avenue by the water tank, and we're just starting kind of a newer one, south of the interstate by the...
Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you. One thing I think, moving forward, we definitely have to look at along with the commission especially, but Tina and Matt, is the parking issue in the winter time here. I mean, I see cars sitting forever, and I know it's creating a lot of problems with, with our street department. I think we have to look at that and figure out certain days that they have to be off the streets and, or else they get towed, because we're in the second storm and I still see cars from the first storm. And that's, that is huge on you guys. It slows you down, in return, it costs more money for the taxpayer. We need to do something, is what I'm saying, within a timeframe here so we get those cars off the streets.
We do have a group working on a parking ordinance to address just that.
Okay, great.
Any additional questions for Mr. Randbick?
Mr. Scott, I think you guys continue to do great work and keep it up. I mean, it's...
Hats off to the guy.
It's a thankless job, and you know, everyone, everyone has ideas, and you can do your job better, but you guys do a great, great work.
I absolutely agree too. I continue to get comments all the time after a major snow event about the job that you folks, your folks do. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Fisk, any correspondence, any non-agenda items you'd like to bring forward?
No, there is none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any non-agenda items that you'd like to bring forward?
I have something here that was called under correspondence for our non-agenda.
Please, Frank, come on up. Certainly.
I received an email this last week, and I represent, my name's Frank Lenzmeyer. I represent a senior group here in West Fargo. And two years ago, we had two vans on the streets of West Fargo dedicated to helping seniors or people get rides here in West Fargo. Today, there's four. This is part of that. Because of the relationships that have been developed by you commissioners with different people in our communities, crossing out of West Fargo into our area communities, things like this are possible. And the email that I received was from the operations supervisor of the Metro Senior Ride Service, Valley Senior Services. "I want to send out a huge thank you again to Gate City Bank for their donation of the Durango meal vehicle. It showed every ounce of its worth today with the snow. The driver that took the frozen meals out in the country would have not been able to deliver three of about 56 frozen meals. If we had not had the Durango to get through the snow on the gravel roads, we couldn't have made it. We appreciate this vehicle so much. There are not words to express the confidence in the ability and safety it provides in the snowdrifted areas." This exemplifies the support that you commissioners have given us as seniors here in our community. The Valley Senior Services, it provides a lot of services for seniors, and it makes this not a good community delivered, but a great community. And I'd like to reiterate, there are not words to express how much we appreciate your support in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenzmeyer. Any other non-agenda items for anyone? I'd like to call on John Neeb. John? Would you please share whether you adopt a hybrid, just a kind of a general statement about what the fire department's trying to do? You're, you're fine. You're, you're projecting well.
We just, we, we would like the community to be able to actually adopt a hybrid, make them up for us, pictures and tell us when, then we... We, to me...
And could you give me an estimate of how many hydrants are in the city of West Fargo? 2,000. So ladies and gentlemen, we have 2,000 fire hydrants, and 37 of them have been adopted, and there's some real lonely fire hydrants out there. So I would encourage all of you to adopt a couple, not just foster homes, we want them adopted. So thank you, John. Appreciate it. Please do everything that you can. With that, no other items to come before the commission this evening? I hear a motion to adjourn, please. Will move? Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Olson. Moved and seconded to adjourn. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Mark.